Well, call me.
Can I talk to you guys?
City council work session February 18th, 2020 to order at 6:07 PM.
Come up here to talk so you guys can actually hear me.
What?
I whisper about half the time. So, I did believe you guys are a little back that has some graphs on it.
Thank you.
I know we're here to talk about staffing levels, but I thought some crime stats might be of some value. I went back as far as 2005. Previous to that, there was another report writing system that I'd have to hire a hacker to get into to figure out what those numbers were. But I was able to go back all the way to 2005 and see what the actual numbers were. And these numbers are substantially different than what I report to you guys on a monthly The report that you get on a monthly basis is more of what we did last month and calls for service and our activities and that's showing you that, hey, we're busy, we're working, we're doing stuff. Okay? Add all of those calls that we respond to, these are what's generated from those calls. Some of those calls don't generate anything. A majority of our calls don't generate anything. But one of the things that it kind of shows here is our caseload is down substantially from 2005. It kind of bounced around a little bit. 2009 was really high. I can show some of these as these fluctuations kind of go up and down. I can associate these with turmoil within the police department and lack of staff. So, we can see those fluctuations all the way across the board as we lose a guy or we had a guy. And that takes a little while. So, I lose a guy today, we're going to see those results probably six, eight months of not seeing anybody unless we fill the position forever and we get more able to get that person back on the road enough speed. Citation rates fluctuating up and down based upon staff, those are always going to go up and down. 2009 in particular, 2009, 2010, we were within a transition of management and we had internal investigations going on. One police chief out the door. And at one point during, I want to say it was 2010, I have to actually go back and look as we kind of transitioned into 2010, there were only two of us working. And for about two months there, it was just me for a while. So, kind of a bump and run there. But overall, as you look, our crime rates have gone down. And the ones that are really important, person crimes and property crimes, because those are the ones that we look at the most. You're talking about crimes against people, which are going to fall into categories of assaults, recent assaults, disorderly conduct, also the state crimes are kind of fit into that mold. Property crimes, person crimes, they're all down substantially from 2005. Person crimes especially, down to 10 for 2019, we're five in 2018. Those are sometimes things we don't have a ton of control over. Property crimes is probably the most significant that you see with staffing levels, how those numbers are going to go up and down. The more people we have visible out on the street, the less property crimes you're likely going to have. Some studies have shown that too many police officers is going to increase your crime rate. Too little police officers is going to increase your crime rate. Okay? So, you've got to find a sweet spot in the middle somewhere. And some of the other studies that I read, as we're on patrol and you see us sitting down like by the mini park. For the first 15 minutes of us being there, we're very effective. Beyond that 15 minutes, it's no longer effective anymore. You have to move somewhere else. So, we tried to do incorporate some of these things, don't spend too much time in one area, try not to leave your car online, try to be on foot. And I think that's helped substantially to drop those numbers. Another thing that I believe helped a lot was when we started enforcing code enforcement. That dropped our crime rate substantially. I mean, you guys have heard before, you know, the broken window effect. You know, you got a broken window, you're going to have more broken windows. And the same thing, you tend to have clean neighborhoods, you're going to have less crime in those clean neighborhoods. There's no place to hide, there's not a tall brush for people to run into. And I think that's helped substantially as well. Over the course of time. Now, what does that all have to do with our staffing levels, obviously, what I said? We need to find a sweet spot. But how do we continue to maintain where we're at today with our numbers? I would like to see our numbers stay about where they're at right now, if not drop relatively more. But if we can't maintain staff, I know that those are going to climb. And it's going to be out of my control to be able to do anything about it. So, when we start talking about staffing levels, what can we do? What's the real problem? So, our current staffing levels, and I was really proud to say two months ago that we were fully staffed and good to go. One of our hires has decided that he's fallen in love with the girl in bed on him and he's going to move to Washington. So, he's moved on and he's kind of quit law enforcement altogether. So, we lost him as of last Friday. And the other officer, Hayeson Camp, has decided that he is going to, he's got too much on his plate right now between his home life and his work life and his own company that he's trying to run. So, he wanted to go back to part-time. So, he went back to 50%, which is great to have those extra two days a week if we can get him here on the days that we need him here. So, it's kind of a scheduling nightmare. So, that's where we're at today. And we've got, obviously, three full-time officers working. And that includes the SRO, which I really should not include in this because she's dedicated to the school for the majority of the time. So, we can still use her, but as far as active patrol staff, people on the road, it's hard to be able to use her for anything and count her as part of our patrol. So, what I found for optimal staffing levels is within the police department, four to five. So, some studies have shown, recent studies, and there's no real guideline, and I think Scott covered this at one point years ago, how many officers per thousand should we have? Well, there's an array, the most recent one that I read went anywhere from 12 officers per 10,000 to 17 officers per 10,000. Those numbers work. I mean, if you can get them down to, the equation comes out to 1.25 officers per thousand or up to one and a half officers, right in the range somewhere, per thousand population. So, those numbers will work great for agencies that have one-four hour coverage. So, it doesn't work great for us. We have 168 hours a week to cover, and if you put two and a half bodies on, we're still only covering 120, 110-ish hours if we don't have the overlap. So, realistically, we need to have four to five officers work in the road. And when they do the calculations for patrol staff, they don't count me. They don't count administrative staff, sergeants, patrol sergeants, because they have other duties. In our world, we count us because I work in the road just as much as everybody else is at this point. So, four to five full-time works really well if we can maintain them. We struggle to do that. I remember back in 2009, 2010, I want to say I took the interim chief's position in late 2009 through 2010. And when we opened a position, we got 50 items. And it didn't take very long to get them either. I mean, they were coming in one after another, and we had to weed through all these people, figure out which ones are going to be the top 10 that we're actually going to interview. Now that we put it out there, we're lucky to get one. And the problem has come up because there's just not enough people out there that want to be cops anymore. There's, it's not an active career path for people. And then, because not only are we struggling, every other agency around us has the same struggles. So, they're trying to recruit people nonstop, and then they come up with creative ways to, "Come work for my agency, we'll give you a $25,000 sign-on bonus." In that case, those people will leave us, or it leaves us with every level of people that are trying to get their foot in the door, haven't had any luck getting on at those bigger places or much so. But then they come up there and they get trained, and then they take that $25,000 sign-on bonus and they move on to somebody else. I don't think that's going to change in the immediate future. And I think this struggle is going to be something that we have and every other law enforcement office, agency in the country is going to have forever. I don't believe there's going to be a way to fix it. There could be positive ways to make it better, but I don't think we're ever actually going to fix that issue. So, some of the options that I popped up with, obviously, was we need to make ourselves look a little bit more promising to get candidates in. So, that being said, we're one of the lowest-paid agencies in our area. So, make ourselves a little bit more competitive. We increase wages and benefits, be more competitive with insurance agents. We can only go so far when we have so many dollars. We can't give everybody a $25,000 sign-on bonus. But as far as retention is concerned, if we were paying close to what the other agencies were paying, nobody would leave. They wouldn't have a reason to leave. And for the most part, and maybe it's just my staff and the people that have worked for me in the past, they're happy. They like it here, but the wages and benefits are always going to be a big deal. So, if they're going to move on, I can't say it lightly. Personally, for me, when I started, I didn't get in this career for money. That wasn't where I was at. Money's good and it's fun, but that's not why I wanted to be a cop. Because when I started, the wages were way worse than they are here. So, the other thing is, we can hire multiple part-time people to try to fill voids and hope it works. Like I said earlier, we have a scheduling nightmare with them because they kind of make their own schedule. And yeah, they're a part-time employee, but if I want somebody to work Saturday and Sunday, then I can work Monday, Tuesday, and on Saturdays, well, I don't need coverage on Monday, Tuesday, I need coverage on Saturday and Sunday. So, it doesn't help us out too much. And we're still working through that, trying to make it beneficial. Another option, obviously, is to contact services with Columbia County. That's come up a couple of times over my tenure. Clask and I have done the same thing. They've been doing it now four-ish years, right in there somewhere. They recently, in a recent conversation with the sheriff, they were going back to Clask and I city council and was planning to ask them for another partial position. They'll cover that. They currently pay for 85% of one and a half officers and a part-time supervisor. And those costs run upwards of $400,000 a year. And that's not the exact number there, I mean, it's right up there.
Could you repeat that?
What's that?
Could you repeat that last thing?
Cost for Clask and I, they're currently paying for 85% of one and a half officers and a part-time supervisor.
And that was $450,000?
No, upwards of $400,000, right in that ballpark. I want to say it was 300 and something. And they were, like I said, they were going to ask them for more at that point. And that covers them for $12 a day, seven days a week.
And that's just in employees' costs through the sheriff's department?
Yeah.
They must pay a certain amount of vehicle costs and...
Well, I haven't seen their contract as of yet, but I know what originally happened when they took over the police department, they also took over all of their assets, to include their vehicles, their guns, everything went with them. The sheriff did say that there are other costs involved in that number, not just wages and salary. There's other stuff in there that Ken couldn't charge.
I just assumed it'd be the same, but we make, you know what I mean, in the same sense?
Yeah.
Fairly within...
Pretty close.
Close margin.
Yeah. I think the cost is a little steep for $12 a day.
Yeah. So, if they have somebody who calls, not during those $12, there's an additional fee, I presume?
I mean, I don't want to speculate basically what their contract is, but all of their calls get covered. And that's what they're going to tell you, is all of their calls will get covered. Now, without going door-to-door to Clask and I and finding out what the citizens really feel, their city council is probably, you know, if nobody's coming and screaming and yelling about their services, they're probably going to tell you it's going great.
I would just say, ask me one question. Did you do any investigative work as far as this just knowledge you picked up over the time?
I was sure.
As far as Clask and I go?
Clask and I, the sheriff and I had a conversation.
And it was pertaining to this workshop?
Literally.
I don't want to put you on a bad spot, so...
Well, my hate party was in reference to this.
Okay.
But not necessarily about, hey, we want to do this, we're thinking about doing this. I just did it real basic inquiry with the sheriff.
Okay.
He shot me some numbers off the top of his head.
So, it's fair business.
Yeah. Another topic that we discussed, our backboard, I was saying, so we must be going actually to the door-to-door and asking the citizens what they feel about the services they're being provided. We're never really going to know what they feel. I did have a traffic crash that I responded to on Saturday. Involved a Clask and I resident, and while I'm doing paperwork for the traffic crash over here, he's talking with the other driver involved, and I come into a conversation with the, "Well, at least you guys still have a police department." So, I had to question what that was kind of about. And he's like, "Well, you know, I haven't even used the sheriff's office, but it takes six hours to get a response, it's not okay with me." So, I don't want to speculate on what the call was to them. There's times that we probably had a six-hour response.
Right.
You know, and that's just one guy of many that doesn't have anything against them, but as part of the services provided, he's not having that. Another topic that the sheriff and I discussed was a partial service contract. So, we still maintain the police department, we maintain our own staff, and we pay them for 50% of a cop to cover when we're not. And that would be 100% of the time if we're not. So, if I go on medication and the patient is not covered, they have to respond to our calls. He said that's possibly doable because they were, they're trying to, a half a cop doesn't give anybody anything other than a little bit of money. It's hard to hire half a cop, really, really difficult. So, they have one and a half cops with Clask and I, so they're trying to fill that void so they can actually hire a body for that half a position. So, if Clask and I wasn't going to bite on paying for another 50%, then there was going to be an opening for 50%. So, 50% would run us $40,000 to $50,000 a year, and that cost would change annually as cost of living increases and everything else.
Is there staffing, do they have staffing issues at county?
All of us, yes.
But is there significant? Is it an issue?
Right, right. It has been in the past. Right now, I, during our conversation a few weeks ago, they were about to be full staff. They had a couple of people left at that round. Again, they have the same issue we do.
Yeah. Because I would be afraid that they were short of staff, that inter...
Exactly. My next topic was, you know, we can write anything we want to down in a contract, and we can say this is the services that we want here. But when the rubber meets the road, if they need the cop in Clask and I, and there's nobody else available, your cop's probably going to Clask and I. And it's hard to judge how that would be managed if you guys went back and said, "Hey, we're not getting our services." And they would likely say, "Okay, well, we can try to do better," or "You can reopen your police department at a substantial cost." And that's the true drawback to giving it up and not knowing what you're paying for. Going back is difficult. Once you jump into those leads, they're just hard to get out.
So, question about, you just talked about of a potential part-time contract. So, that would be just them available, or would that be them presumably here in town?
In our conversation, it wasn't necessarily that I wanted them here patrolling because I would want to save those funds for when people are...
Okay.
They, our citizens pay county taxes too, so if they want to come up with patrol on their own, great. But I don't want to, I don't want to give a bill for something on a date we don't need them. We're here, you guys are already paying us to do a job, there's no sense in them being here unless they're coming up to help us with something in which we have mutual aid agreements and stuff in place that covers that anyway.
Which leads to my next question, which was if we have one officer on duty and nobody else is in the office, you're not in the office doing paperwork, whatever, they potentially can go out and do a mutual assist to Clask and I or somewhere, correct?
For sure.
So, that really wouldn't be any different than us paying for the sheriff and then him ending up in Clask and I instead of here?
Potentially.
Okay. I was just clarifying.
Yeah. I mean, that would be, just like going into a complete service contract, even a partial service contract, it's going to be a little bit of work, and there's going to have to be some very periodical fine-tuned language the attorneys will probably have to be involved in that.
Chief, could you utilize our resource officer because we only have about 162 days of school here? So, you've got, you're looking at almost 200 days that...
Yes.
That, could you, you see what I'm saying? Kind of fitness schedule?
And we do. So, we have, all right, obviously, the summer months where the SRO is 100% ours, and then what it comes down to during the general work week ends up being, rough math is one day a week in hours that we can use her for. And we do utilize those. In fact, I need to present to her a number of hours because he questioned what they were getting versus what they were getting.
So, just for clarification, when you say one hour a week...
10 hours.
10 hours a week, is that 10 consistent hours, or is that 10 hours spread out over the entire...
It could be spread out. We use her...
So, utilizing her...
We use her.
Utilizing that officer would be somewhat difficult if it's an hour here, hour there.
Right. We currently use her for Saturdays because of our staff changes, and you weren't...
So, she can do a shift then?
Yeah. She does one shift a week for us right now.
If I'm covering ground, then you guys have already covered...
No, and it's fine, I think we have a little bit, he got time. So, I can go back a little bit, I did want to make sure that you guys were all aware. We did lose officers.
Yeah, I knew that.
He was, he decided that he doesn't want to work in law enforcement anymore, and he fell in love with his girlfriend, and he moved into Washington to start another career in the industry. And Officer Hayeson Camp has gone back to part-time, so two days a week. So, right now, as Sean and I have, as far as the patrol schedule is concerned, that we can really use for road hours, I have fallen into a patrol rotation currently.
So, you guys, I know you guys talked about this, but I would like to kind of, you talked about compensation. So, is that, what's the level and degree of importance is that in your, you have excellent interviews with...
Chief, every person that has left during my time here as a supervisor has left for more money and benefits.
So, is that on a level of one to five, is that the number one?
Oh, yeah.
That's the primary thing?
By far. And some of those individuals that has left have come back and told me, "I'll come back and work for you anytime and pay me what I make right now."
Which...
There's no way to do that.
Right. Well, we haven't decided that.
Right.
What does that number look like, Chief?
Well, we have, if you look at everybody around us, and they're not going to be, some, one of the officers went to Forest Grove, he started his entry level cop making 70-ish a year, and that's going to go up substantially.
And what are we...
Sheriff's offices are roughly about the same.
Double.
Yeah, it's close to double. Which, you know, if it was, and it's a $5,000 bill, a lot of people are, you know, whatever, I'm not going to use the $5,000. But when it comes to $10,000, $15,000, they're going to move on for that.
So, is there any way to mitigate that in a meeting at halfway or something like that, that forms of, ways of mitigating that issue?
Some.
Obviously, you're not going to, you're not going to double your payroll.
Anything we could, we couldn't physically afford that.
That's what I mean.
I mean, if we had all the money in the world, it would be simple, but...
Well, where I'm leading to this on this is, now, the last two officers we had, they were already gone through the, they were trained up, and you guys just had to do your training within-house, whatever that was required, familiarize them with the community. But the cost in terms of, like, that we have historically had to absorb with new hires, that where we have to send them to the academy, they come back, do you have any breakdown on the cost in terms of...
It's expensive. So, we're looking at 16 weeks at the police academy, there's just 100% their wages. They're at an entry level wage, it's 40, I want to say it's 44 a year.
Yeah, I was thinking...
So, what would that be in one month?
10.
It was a monthly rate, I don't have...
4,000? 4,000, somewhere in that area.
It's like 40, 44, 4500 a month or something.
And we're paying them loaded up?
That's the entry level wage.
I know, but we're paying all their, all their...
Right, right.
So, 444 is not a number.
It's 10 a month.
10,000?
Loaded.
Yeah.
10 grand? So, 16 weeks, that's four months, that whole $40,000 that you put into the training.
Then they have on a brand-new cop, you're at minimum 12 months as a seat clerk.
Yeah.
And that's two cops, that's not just one, because you have an FTO sitting with them doing nothing.
Right.
That you're paying somebody.
But you are getting kind of something out of that.
Oh, for sure.
You got two officers on duty, and so you're getting some return out of that.
Yeah.
But what I, if somehow you can mitigate it to a certain degree, well, this is conclusion. So, go ahead.
Now, and I was almost done already, I have two questions. Anybody can you add something?
Go ahead, Ken.
Okay. So, the partial patrol services, $40,000, $50,000 rough ballpark figure, there's probably other costs associated with that that could be overtime costs associated with that that could increase those numbers a little bit. Or, you know, the final option, we continue doing what we're doing because, like I mentioned earlier, this hiring thing is not just us, this is every local...
Right.
Portland police had over 100 openings. They have substantially higher wages than most of us around here. Washington County had a bunch of openings. Forest Grove is still trying to hire. Columbia County is just about topped out for their patrol staff. I think St. Helens is still hiring, they're offering a $25,000 hiring bonus. I think Scout Police is still down a guy. Clask and I, obviously, is, so Rainier, they kind of keep to themselves, they don't do too much. Kind of stepped outside into CIS a little bit to try to find better benefits and teamsters, and we thought about that too, but CIS doesn't recommend it. But yeah, I mean, that's kind of where we're at. We continue doing what we're doing, and we find a way to retain people. And I think both of those is going to be a challenge. And I don't think, well, if we increase the wages and we try to find some better benefits packages out there, health coverage is a big deal for people nowadays because it's expensive. Maybe we dropped what we used to pay 90% of the health coverage, now they're at 85. If we can go back to 90% on that and reduce some of the costs. I don't know what we can do to make it better, but the county pays 100% of what we're paying 15% of. They don't have to cover any of those costs there for the basic insurance plan that we have. There is a couple of things that we could do. Realistically, if we could come up with a partial service agreement with the sheriff's office, and we cut out our part-time position, basically our fourth position, because I'm not counting the SRO as a person, but we cut out that fourth position completely... and we contract services 50% of the time with the sheriff's office, that gives us the ability to, to move around and take vacation time. Right now, I mean, I don't intend to take much vacation time over the next four months to let him be able to, it's not going to be a body available to. I'm over $300 of accumulation already. Sean's over $300. It's hard to, it's hard to do, to get a couple of weeks off and fill the void without breaking the bank because every time one of us leaves, it's either I cover it or he covers it. So if I go on vacation, Sean has to cover my days. So then I have to give him time off to cover the extra days that he just worked. So I mean, it's a vicious cycle. We can't fix until we get more staff or we have some other way that we can use the sheriff's office or some of, some of the other agencies to benefit us a little bit.
Do you have any budget numbers with you?
I don't.
Oh. I was curious to what the payroll costs are as opposed to the entire budget for the police department.
I have mine.
Something that just, we're far from calling. Yeah, I think it could.
Wasn't the total like 602 or something?
It's somewhere, but I want to be more...
I'd say most of that is wages and benefits.
Right.
I would never, I've spoken to a company about this before, I would never recommend doing 100% service contract with, with an outside agency. Giving up that control and that power locally is, is a scary thing because like I said, if you decide you don't like it, going back is really, really expensive and it's probably not money you're going to have to do.
Didn't Plaskanai do that? Are they switching back now?
No. Not that I've heard, anyway. Financially, I'll be taken to be able to afford to go back.
Once that's gone, they start spending the money other places and...
Well, I mean...
No, they're spending their budget.
With the academy's office.
Oh, wasn't cheaper? Not really.
It was, it was mixed upon. They, their police department had a pretty substantial budget in front of them, but they're still upwards of 50% of their budget was, so they're $400,000 to cover 12 hours a day in a part-time supervisory.
So payroll expenses, salaries are 342,000. Insurance benefits are 54, so that's 400,000. Retirement benefits are another 80,000. So that's 400, you're, by the time you throw workers' comp in there, which is 11, 12,000, you're getting 500,000 just to comp in. And the budget is 605, is that, would that be correct?
So take sure it's not finalized on the other page.
Okay.
Flip the page because it should...
That.
That number.
That's why we're, we won't charge them.
Should have a bottom number.
It's the bottom number there. Joe said it's 558. No, that's not it. Total police expenses, total expenses 605, 758. So it's 606,000.
That's for five officers?
That includes the SRO.
Yeah.
So it's four and a half?
Yeah.
That was budgeted.
Yeah, that's like four and a half then.
Yeah.
That includes COVID enforcement?
Yeah. So I think, I miss, city office is half of our...
Wages and benefits are already consuming a very large portion of the, of the budget.
Yep.
I would like to know, and I, Dale hates us apples and oranges, what the surrounding, the agencies that are poaching us, what they're paying. Yeah. So that, it may just be the time to where we might just have to make some decisions on, on putting some money into payroll. That's a budget issue, but...
So you prefer that I look at Columbia County agencies or would you want me to look at Columbia County and Washington County?
So who mostly poaches us?
They've been St. Ellens and Columbia County. And then one out of Washington County, Forest Grove.
Trouble with Forest Grove is, is that that's where it gets into apples and oranges because you're, you're getting into an area that a lot of money gets...
Yeah.
To me, there's a difference. And I can stop talking if you guys have more important things on me. But if you're, if you're involved in an agency over there in Washington County, Longmont County, that, they're not as apt to vacuum as in these smaller communities like around here. So the police are pretty much hung out and dry in those places and that's something to consideration that I think that comes into play. I would certainly if I was an employee. So I like to kind of look at them close by and unfortunately, Plaskanai is more our size, but they've decided to farm it out.
And you still have Rainier and I hate to give you a comparable names, they're one of the highest paid agencies in Columbia County.
No, they're right next to Longview. They, they deal with a lot of fallout from Longview. So they basically, what do they have at, at Plaskanai then for, they're paying for a...
They're paying for a position and a half.
So how do they, how do they manage to cover that community with one and a half people?
That's what you said, 12 hours a day, 70 a week.
12 hours a day, 7 days a week. And then calls that come in outside of that that are emergency calls, the county will go cover those as their emergency calls. If they're non-emergency calls, they're going to sit in the queue until somebody gives them.
The trouble with us is we're on the, we're between the mountains. That makes a big difference.
And I, there's so many times you don't have to give anybody a higher tax base or anything I wish we would absorb into Washington County because as far as law enforcement is concerned, I hold resources from Washington County more than I do from our home, you know, because they're closer.
So just on their ads, North Plains is 52,000, Rainier's 60,000, just entry level.
That's entry level. And where, what was 44 you said?
Yeah. And then Forest Grove, entry level was 63. That's just all I asked what they have out right now.
You asked about the reserve issue?
I have, but I'm still trying to flush out this training part of it. I don't quite, would that person really be fully loaded as they're going through schooling? They wouldn't, 10 grand, it wouldn't be, would it be 44?
It's benefits and purse. So we're...
You're saying that's more than their salary?
10,000? It's 10,000 one for the...
120 a grand.
What?
Yeah.
120?
I think she made maybe 10 grand over the training.
No, so...
No, it's 10,000 a year.
Oh.
Not 10,000 a month.
Okay, yeah, I took her answer as 10 grand a month.
I mean, is what, they risk being paid back if someone poaches that?
Yeah.
Probably total.
It's a 90...
Right? Because we only got 27 back for Cody or something.
Right. Well, it comes out, if it happens within the first year, we can, we can go back, charge the agency for, it was, when we charged for Cody, we used to be able to charge them for 99% of the officer's cost plus the FTO cost.
Right.
So now we can't, we can't bill the FTO cost anymore. We can only bill 99% for the first year, 66% for the second and 33% for the third.
So just so I understand, 10,000 is, is the package? That's what it costs over that four-month period?
Yeah.
Okay. So you still have the 4,000?
And it depends on if they're covering themselves, if they're covering a family because of the offer. So it could be they're cheap one, could be they're fully loaded with kids one.
Yeah.
There's just differences. It's not always...
Okay, but you're talking during that four-month training period?
Yeah, it's a 2,500 a month.
Okay. And then whatever their wages are.
Right, on top of that.
It's 4,000.
See, that's one thing we thought about.
6,500.
Instead of fighting this issue, embrace the issue. We know we are a training school.
Right.
And, and in that light then, just embrace that. Keep one in the pipeline all the time, so, and can you contract them that they have to stay a year or...
There, there used to be a, a pretty regular thing for agencies that if you hired an entry level cop, you were able to give them a contract and then the poaching bill or poaching law came out and all those subcontracts went away. Because then we were able to, we're able to bill agencies for cost versus scaring the officer into, "If you quit, we're going to bill you for cost."
So just for clarification, what is the poaching, what's, what do we get back on the poaching, number-wise?
First year, 99% of the total.
Total.
But not the other officer it takes to train?
Well, he's on duty, so this is where I look at it, Counselor, is he's on duty.
And you got backup.
Yeah. I mean, he's performing his function as a...
You're, you're paying him to be there anyway.
Right. If that, if that means anything to me.
You have to have two on duty though, if that's particular.
Well, you're paying, you have that trainee and then you have the, the training officer. Right? Is that correct?
Yeah, you just can't charge for the training officer.
Right, right.
It's just the 99% for the first year, 66% for the second, 33% for the third.
So if you want to get rid of them, you got to get them hired in that first month, I mean, first year of...
Well, and realistically, when you, when you look at the numbers, then of course their time comes out to be about the same.
Yeah.
The, the bill looks about the same. If it's 33% in the third year, it looks about the same as it is for 99% in the first.
Get your basic cost back.
Yeah.
So if I understand you, Counselor, then you're saying that if you, if you keep one in the pipeline, you're just filling the void? And that the poaching cost covers itself and...
Because, yeah, it seems like, and we went over the numbers earlier, you know, like now, I mean, if both those guys would have bailed on us and we didn't even have part-time, now we're short. And it's hard to get a new officer in and it just seems like it might be smoother to always have one in the pipeline.
And we've been, we've been active recruiting people.
And that's...
Not that, I mean, that round right now.
Yeah.
So we, we have another one that's, that's probably ready to start over the next three weeks.
So just to explore that, what he was talking about there, just to put it into context, you would have, you would go through, I've been through your hiring process where you don't do the board anymore? Where you, okay, so you have to do that and then they've got to pass the background check and there's a cost to that.
Psychological, medical.
Right. So what, what do they do in the meantime? I mean, but you incur a certain amount of cost there. I'm not against what you're saying.
Yes.
I'm just trying to flush it out. If we don't hire somebody for, say they're in the pipeline, they're waiting...
Or are you saying you bump it up and you add your four that you have and they're always hiring a fit? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we would, we would always have somebody going to the academy. We would be bearing that cost, which is for that four-month period.
Where we always have somebody that's training.
We always got somebody in the pipeline and it seems like we're losing them enough, fast enough that, and usually we get about a year out of them, maybe two.
We've got, hit right about the two-year mark on just about all of them.
But as soon as one of them comes out of the academy, we stuff another one there. You know, some of them might get poached.
We can't yet recoup the poaching, the cost of the poaching cost if they use that unless they're hired and they're working here. Yes.
So...
Somebody fresh out of the academy, then don't count?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He wouldn't.
Because, well, if, if we send them to the academy, they're working here.
And basically, we got no harm, no foul there because if we're going to get everything we've got in the back.
So under, under that, would you have six officers sometimes at a time?
We potentially have one of them being trained.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to get an idea of where you were at, how realistically...
Because I know how we get behind the eight ball and then we're, okay, well, we've interviewed and we got academy and two of them in the academy and one, and, and we're short for a long period of time.
Yeah, for like 18 months.
So it's almost, to me, it's like if we embrace that and get proactive, if, but there it is, if you can get qualified applicants, so they got to be 21s.
They've got to be enticing, yeah, 21s a minute.
Yeah. So it's, you can't really recruit out of the high school. Or you wouldn't want to, but... It seems to me like that process of constantly looking for people and switching is very disruptive to the police force and your job, is that correct?
Without a doubt. But that being said, we've also been doing it since 2007. Now this, I think it's more visible now. I think I talk about it a little bit more than I used to, but we're, we've always had this issue. It wasn't my problem at one point, so I...
So my thoughts driving over here tonight, and you just tell me if I'm wrong on any of this, I think back in the history of some of the police officers we've had here in town, it seems like we had some older people, more established in their career that lived here and that seemed to help them want to stay longer term. So I kind of thought we have a problem of hiring people from out of town. They have to drive up here, one. Two, young people, and, and I'm not disparaging young people, but I think once they get trained up, obviously they see the money somewhere else. And when I say young is a problem because it's boring probably for them here and there's not a lot of action. Maybe they want to go where the action is, you know? Maybe they want the car chases every other night and then also...
I did when I first started.
Exactly. And then the pay also. I mean, to me, I don't think I'd want to choose to go into that for that starting pay with the risk to my life and everything, so I think our pay is probably our number one, close to our number, probably our number one problem, maybe, maybe number two. So that's my thoughts on it. I, I think the pay definitely is a little low.
Yeah. And I would definitely agree with that and I definitely agree with the younger group, say millennials, but we, best word to put it without sounding bad. Millennials are administrative nightmares. They're difficult to supervise. They're probably the best place for them is probably bigger agencies. Well, if they do want money, they, I don't want to say anything that sounds bad, but my kids are the same way. My, my own kids have their, their own sense of entitlement and that's not something that was there in my age group. I, I, I've worked all my life and some of the younger generation growing up, everybody owes them something.
Yeah.
And my kids are like that.
So what, what happened to the reserve?
We had, and I've pretty much closed off any possibilities at this point of hiring reserves because realistically, I'm wasting the city's money. It's been difficult to get qualified applicants to come in, even at a volunteer level. Keep in mind, FTO has to train those guys just like the guys coming out of the academy, but we're dumping money into, we're required by the state to do psychological and medical evaluations. So we're dumping 800-ish dollars just into that. And if they fail the psychological, we're done. And, and I've had four that have failed psychological evaluations for a reserve program.
Are you getting, I just would counter that, just with something I'd like to ask. Are you getting, is it well-known that that's what you're looking, you're looking for reserve officers in the community?
We, we have, I advertised over the last two and a half budget cycles for reserve officers and we got less than five hours.
Okay. That would be the answer to the issue if you could, if you could manage it, you know?
Well, and that's what I thought too. You get volunteers that eventually one of them cops.
Well, that would be Dale's, your deal, what you're talking about.
We have an opening and we have somebody sitting in a reserve spot that just had been waiting. We moved right into that spot.
How does the pay scale work? I understand the first year.
First year goes up, there's, there's 5% increments in between steps and there's six steps and each employee will go up one step every year until they max out.
It takes six years to get to what we consider just a full-scale police officer.
Full-scale police officer, which...
And that's in the 60s?
I want to say this.
I could tell you.
Yeah.
Someone got to answer right there.
Well, you can give me a rough idea.
I actually have their, their contractor here.
Okay. Yeah, one time we had eight reserves here in town.
Yeah, I saw you seen some pictures back in the 90s, there were reserves and then There were reserves, and then there was cops that were hired off cop firms.
Hired off a what?
Cop firms.
Is that 5% compounded as it goes up? Because you go 5% ahead of the next wave, and next wave, next wave? Okay.
And then plus 2.5% for cost of living.
That was after much, every year?
2.5% does not come down to the base rate.
Okay. Yeah, just like normal, okay.
Went to my son-in-law's graduation from the academy about a year and a half ago. He's with Beaverton now. They picked up a lot in his class, out of his class. I think there was only one graduate that came into Columbia County. I think it was, it went to Klascanai.
No, probably went to Columbia County.
Just about a year, year and a half ago. Or Columbia, or the county, yeah.
Yeah, they've, they've had, I want to say four over their last two years.
He graduated from Burnoni High School, and he's 30 years old, and he just loves it there in Beaverton, so...
53,000, 54,000 for...
Is that for the top?
No, no, this was Schaefer or...
Okay, he was a step three.
Yeah, and Hanson were both 53.
Yeah, he was a step three, and I think Hanson was budgeted that way because he lives here part of the time.
Okay.
Officer, Sergeant Carnet.
All holidays paid, paid vacation?
Well, in, in theory, we work off holidays, but they do give holiday compensation. And then if they work the holiday, they get paid by half.
And yours, I heard you, like, coming late, apologize for that from work, but I heard you talk about insurance. Is it the same plan that the rest of the city staff is on?
They have the same options. We have regents, or Kaiser.
Okay.
And then it's based on how many family, we will cover full family. But we are paying 15, the employee pays 15%. The city pays 85%.
So if your family is a large family, it costs any officers more off their paycheck? Or just more of a percentage, or...
The family benefits cost more.
Yeah, so they're paying, they're paying, I'm paying more because my whole family's under me. But I pay 15% of whatever that cost.
It's just that the cost is higher for the whole plan. That's the same way it is where...
I want to say minus like 300 and something a month.
Oh, okay. So there's money take coming off your check for this option?
Yeah, 50% of the cost of insurance that's billed to the city comes out of the employee's pocket.
Oh, and then whatever copayser is, or...
That's in addition, we ban addition.
Like I pay a copay when I go to the doctor.
Yeah.
One thing about this, if you, if you did pay 90% or picked up the whole bill, that doesn't count against perks. Right. Whereas wage increases count against perks, sure. So, um, it, you don't get no, we don't pay taxes, they don't do anything on that, but...
I mean, we're, we're up for, contract negotiations will start again next year.
They still with the benevolent, whatever...
No, they, they have the FOB.
FOB fraternity.
I wish they would change, but they haven't yet.
I have one more question. Who sets these rates? Is it standard through the police union, or is it...
Police, police union actually established the, the pay rates. Those pay rates were actually established back, I negotiated the staff scale in 2007.
Was that under the fraternity?
No.
Was that under the old...
They were reaching that then. And that was back when I was the association president. When I started here, there wasn't no pay scale.
Okay.
It was this spot had this much money, and this spot had this much money.
So it could be wild, all of this.
All of it, all of it's more. And that, that, the pay scale was established. We actually came in much higher during the negotiation process. And the, the response, and I want to say it was directed at the time, the mayor was going to negotiate the contract for the city. And she said at the time, you know, let's not go this high. Let's just go to here for right now. And when the city's going better, we'll bring that up. And we moved it down. So, but up until the last three years, that salary was compounding 2.5% every year. So it was going up based upon the cost of wages every year, no matter what. So there was increases to the base salary up until the last three years.
And now it's based on variance.
So, so this rate only affects us? It's not, there's not other agencies following the same thing?
No.
Okay.
So that's negotiated directly from the police association. And it never has to change. The only, the only change in wages that we've done to that contract over the time that I've been here is when we went through a 12-hour week, work day. A lot of agencies have the ability to go, we're going to work 12-hour days and not pay you for that. Because law enforcement has a salary to the employee, but they're still hourly, overtime eligible. But if they schedule you for 12, some contracts where even they can do that. I wanted to make sure that they were getting paid for the hours that they worked. So we negotiated with them last time that we were going to work a four-day-on, four-day-off rotating work schedule of 12 hours per day. But they're paid for every hour worked. So if they're on a 12-hour work schedule, they get paid for 12 hours and not the 10 that the other one is based on. So that's the only real change that we made. And then they get paid overtime for anything over 12 that they work. And that if they're, like, the SRO's on a 10-hour work schedule, she's on a 10-hour pay scale, she'll get paid for anything over 10 that she works.
Is that time and a half after the 12? And then it hits double time at a certain point?
No, no. Unless it's, it ends up being double time and a half to work the holiday work. They're, they're paid differently. The, the holiday pay is included in their salaries because we never know when they're going to actually work them. And then when they work, they note on their timesheet, the holiday work, and then that becomes an overtime day.
And you have one applicant?
I don't know. In background right now, she will probably be completed within the next two weeks. And she's certified as well. Well, not quite certified. There's a couple of things that we have to do. Finish her up, but no academy. She's been through the academy already.
Oh. How many local officers do we have?
Uh, zero at this point. Now, after, yeah.
Happy, yeah. How many we had in the last five years?
Um, no, one, Schaefer.
Been pretty much out of town, coming up, commuting up.
Yep. And then I lived here for a number of years, and then left.
How much does a robo-cop cost?
We got three of them now.
I watched that movie, and you don't want to.
Yeah. Well, I had another thought, and I'm probably off-base on it. But what if the pay was higher, and you had four officers, but the pay was higher? Wouldn't that be easier than trying to rotate, finding people?
Well, and that's what I, what I'm looking at. I think there was a resolution done back in the day that we were going to be staffed with a chief, a sergeant, and two officers. And I think that was done through council resolution. So not counting the SRO position, and we hired two more people, we ended up there four, with the SRO accounting those numbers. And that's, realistically, that works well. If we can make that work well at four, so long as everybody is here to work their rotations, work their schedules, like I mentioned in here. Oftentimes, we get sick and come to work because, and nobody else.
Yeah.
And, and that's, you know, worth. It's hard for me to sell a package to, to a group of people going, I'm going to give you 10 weeks a year of vacation time, and give you eight hours a month in sick time, but you're never allowed to take...
Yeah, yeah.
And then once you hit 260 hours, we're going to get you with me.
I wish you could communicate to Sergeant Carnet and yourself both. We sure appreciate you sticking through, taking the time around here. You've been through some rough times, and you guys both have managed to stay here. You have a ton of gratitude for that, at least mine.
No, I appreciate that. And that's, that's something, Sean, Sean's looked outside a couple of times too. And he, he almost went, you know, I can't say I had a big way to move. And part of that was, at one point, I wasn't going to pull, you know, if I can't supervise three people, what am I doing? You know, and that's, but again, that's another thing is there's no room for advancement in our department.
Yeah.
When people get hired here, they might have come and go on for it. They might have wanted to be a detective. They might have wanted to be a K-9 officer. They might have wanted to be working evidence or something like that. Those positions aren't here for them. And then you give somebody like me who's, who's a lifer, and then Sean, who's going to stick around for a while. That sergeant's position isn't going to hold anytime soon.
What kind of options is there for retirees to come out of retirement and work and still get the pensioners? Are you that good?
There is, and I don't have the actual answers for you. It's like, I just read something about that people retiring and coming back to work, and I don't know if they changed the hours. It used to be they could only work 1,080 hours, not 40, 1,040.
Halftime, okay.
Halftime. And then there were some other things that they also read, that law enforcement, rural areas could actually work full-time.
Oh.
But I, I don't want to, I don't want to quote that. Some of them could.
Well, the worst thing that happens when they move, when, when you get a couple of guys here that have been here for a little while, and then they move on, which has been that continuous past, or not only does it cost a lot of money, but they're affecting us. You know, you move somebody in here from, comes here from another area, they don't know the community, they don't know who the people are. Their, their effectiveness is basically, you know, downward. And by the time they get to a point where they just started to understand who the bad guys are, what, what's going on, ins and outs, they're gone.
And there's rapport building that takes a really long time. I mean, I don't, my first two years here, I got nothing but complaints. Don't, don't be like me my first two years.
Well, you build a trust level where people speak to you and tell you things you need to know, you know, so...
And I, I came from bigger areas where, where, I dealt with a lot of people over and over and over again, but not as frequently. So your, your attitude, the way you come across the people as a law enforcement officer in the bigger cities, don't mean as much as they do here. And, and we oftentimes have to look at, okay, we were trained to do something this way, but when we come out here to these rural areas, we have to change that mindset a little bit and not be so overbearing and aggressive with people. And, and that's, I don't want to call it friendship building, but definitely rapport building with people in the community. And that's just as important as everything else.
Well, it's, uh, mayor, we're...
Yeah, I know.
So where, any other questions? Let, let me ask, what would you like to see from me in the future as far as this topic is concerned? Do, do you want me to bring you more, more information about local salaries?
Well, uh...
Do you want me to look into costs and actual number to see what the contract would look like for a partial contract at the sheriff's office?
Can I ask that we bring this up during the meeting, during your...
Presentation?
Your presentation?
See, I have a question.
Your business from departments.
Okay.